Well, lots of things going on in the county here in Laramie County. And we are very fortunate to have one of our county commissioners in studio with us. County Commissioner Troy Thompson, welcome to KGAB Mornings, sir.
Good morning, Gary. Thank you for having me here. It's tough to follow, you know, this Jake is a tough act to follow, the pooper scooper kid.
He is.
Yeah. And usually, you know, I told you when I got here, usually I wait in the lobby, but I was listening on the way in and he was on, and so I had to come stand by your door.
No, 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 no need to, no, you did not interrupt. And actually, he was a pretty hot topic here. And, you know, I just didn't realize all the detriments of dog poop. And for people that think it would make a good fertilizer, think again. But he's your man to go by and pick it up. And you're a veterinarian, so you know all about feces coming from animals.
Well, and I gotta tell you, there is, we call it, there's potential zoonotic diseases. And what those are, are diseases that can be transmitted from animals to humans. And a lot of those are transmitted in the stool.
That's exactly what the article said, zoonesis or something like that.
Yeah, zoonosis, yeah.
All right. Well, we know there's lots of dog poop in the county, but you're not here to clean that up. We'll leave that to Jake. There's other things that you might be trying to clean up in the county. So Commissioner Thompson, give us a little bit of an overview of maybe what's going on in the county that we need to know about right now, or some decisions maybe that are being made.
You know, still a very exciting time in the county. We're in the process of working through the Magpul deal with the Wyoming Business Council and Cheyenne leads, and then, of course, working with the governor's office, working with the legislature to get all of the, that's a, that's a very intricate puzzle. And we're trying to get the pieces to fit together with that. But certainly, that's very exciting.
Have you gotten any feedback from some of your constituents? Because I've heard pros and cons as far as Magpul. What are you hearing from the community?
You know, I'm hearing the same thing. I hear both sides. Hey, listen, you know, this is, this is government or corporate welfare. We don't want that. We should never put tax dollars into corporations. And fundamentally, I absolutely agree with that. And then, of course, I hear the other side of this, oh, my God, this is phenomenal. This is bringing good jobs to the state of Wyoming, jobs that are, that are much needed. You know, the manufacturing sector, which in Wyoming, we just, we don't have a lot of jobs.
Right. So, so right now, with the facts that you have in front of you, where is Troy Thompson leaning? I realize we don't have everything in front of us. There's no final decision made. But you're right, with $13 million, I believe, is it 13, no, it's a...
Well, it is 13 million.
Okay, okay, yeah. So it's $13 million that are coming in. And part of the argument, Commissioner Thompson, is that people are saying, hey, some of us want to start businesses here, and we can't access that money. But the city or the county is very open arms to people outside of the state to bring them in. Why is that dynamic so? How come, you know, some of our folks can't apply for the same monies and get a business going?
Well, there's, there's a lot of different programs that are within the Wyoming Business Council. And obviously, the Magpul one is right here in front of us because it's such a big project, and there is 13 million. But they've got, they've got all sorts of different projects that, that the Business Council, I mean, from, from energy audits, where you can get grants for that. But, but there's, I mean, there's, there's numerous. So, yeah, if you're a small business owner and you want to start a business, I would absolutely say, go talk to the Wyoming Business Council and talk to them. Because there are programs, you don't have to, you know, be on the level of Magpul to get, you know, to get any sort of help from that.
And then also, on or about, where are they planning to set this up? Down at Camp School Stool area? Or do we have any site where they might be setting up camp here in the capital city?
You know, the original plan was to get a temporary facility and then get Magpul moved in, get them going, and then build a permanent facility. But, but they're actually still, still looking at that, working that out. And there may be an existing facility that they may be able to move into to kind of take that middle step out of the process, which would mean actually less money from the Wyoming Business Council.
Now, I would, I would ask this. I mean, obviously, you know, to help a business get started, we get that. But why are we not demanding, or are we, that, hey, over the course of so many years, you have to pay that money back? We'll help you get started, but then the money's got to go back in the coffer.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. And originally, when this was set up, there was a portion of this was going to be a grant, a portion of it was going to be a loan. And then the AG said, hey, listen, you know, based on a footnote, which we can discuss footnotes, I guess, if we want, but based on a footnote, I don't think it's possible or legal for there to be a loan part of this. So it did turn into a grant, so the entire amount is a grant. But a couple of the caveats, there is, there is a portion of this that is going to be and has to be paid back. And then the other portion of this is, we have to see the return. And what is that return? Is it, is it $13 million cash? It's not. What it is, is the number of jobs created, the property tax created, you know, and then that trickle down effect of what it does to our economy. Those are the numbers really that we look at. And then we say, and you know, I guess I'm looking at it as a small business owner as well, and I'm thinking, you know, people from Magpul move here, they've got pets, they're going to bring their, their animals into my veterinary clinic. And, you know, I think it'll help businesses all, all down the line. But, but, but there has to be that return on the investment, if you will. Otherwise, the Business Council doesn't allow these projects.
I think another idea too, if you're just joining us, we're talking with Commissioner Troy Thompson here on KGAB Mornings, carving out part of his Monday morning to be with us here on the show, which we much appreciate. I think some of it is too, Commissioner Thompson, I don't know if you know this or not, are they just going to bring their own people up? Or is this going to provide job opportunities for some of our local residents here?
Yeah, that's another great question. And, and my understanding is, there's a handful that they're going to bring. And most of the people that they're going to employ at the new manufacturing facility are going to be local people.
Right. And I understand, you know, I could understand if management is, is going to be brought in from the corporation. But I know a lot of people are saying, hey, we want a piece of this pie too. We want local people to be hired on. And so I don't know if that's negotiable as we're talking to this business, or if they've already said, hey, we plan to come, bring our management in, we will train local people, much like the Walmart Distribution Center did.
Yeah. And, and you know, when, when we look at the, obviously with Cheyenne leads, their bottom line is the number of jobs that are created. So that is, that is so important with this entire process, is the number of jobs that are created. But, but my understanding is, there is not a set in stone, okay, but they have to be, you know, X percentage has to be Cheyenne residents.
We're talking with Commissioner Troy Thompson here on KGAB Mornings with Gary Freeman. Hang on the phones, we're going to take your phone calls immediately after this. We'll be back. Good morning.
You've been subjected to mind-numbing traffic on your way to and from work. You've watched the minutes slowly tick away on your clock. You've come to the realization you are going to be late again. The last thing you need added to your day is another thing that's going to slow you down, like that CenturyLink Internet. Charter Internet can help give you back the time you deserve. We've doubled our speed while whopping 30 megabits per second without doubling our price. Switch to Charter Internet and get speeds 20 times faster than CenturyLink. Stream that new album 20 times faster. Download your movies 20 times faster. Do everything 20 times faster, all for only $29.95 a month when you bundle. So go ahead and treat yourself to Internet the way it was meant to be. Charter Internet. Call 855-40-SWITCH to learn more. That's 855-40-SWITCH. Now only if you could drive 20 times faster. Restrictions apply. Visit charter.com/optimum for details.
GJ Gardner made building our custom home as easy as one, two, three. Number one, clarity. They explain the process every step of the way. Two, flexibility. We chose our location, floor plan, and design options. And three, relationship. As a locally owned builder, it was easy to reach the owner and staff. Visit their design center, model home, or gjgardner.com.
KGAB Weekends, Car Gab with Nick the Midas Guy. Saturday mornings at 11 on AM 650 KGAB and kgab.com. And now, back to KGAB Mornings with Gary Freeman on AM 650 KGAB.
Hey, good morning. Welcome back to KGAB Mornings. 8:19 is your time. If you're just joining us, good morning to you. We're here with County Commissioner Troy Thompson, and we're going to go right to the phone. I would like to remind you to please keep your comments and questions brief and civil, so that keeps my finger away from the hangup button. Good morning, you're on KGAB Mornings.
Hey, what is the easiest way to get in touch with someone about this grant as far as for small businesses and whatnot? And also, I talked to someone with Senator Enzi's office, and they said that there's no such thing as a grant for businesses. There's no such thing as, you know, a quote, you know, grant. There's only loans. So can, can you kind of explain that a little bit?
All right, thanks for the phone call.
Yeah, good, good questions. First of all, I would call the Wyoming Business Council. And, and I guess I kind of need to lay out the county's role in this. So the legislature set aside X number of dollars every year. And what they say is, this is for economic development, this is for creating jobs. And then there's different programs within that. There's the data centers, the data center expansion. The governor has a certain amount that he can actually help with. So it's, so it's related to economic development. And it is through the Wyoming Business Council. So businesses would go to the Wyoming Business Council, they would apply for these, these types of grants. But, but these businesses need a local government sponsor. And that's where the county comes in. So really, we're kind of the go-between between the legislature and these economic development monies and the actual economic development, like Leeds. And then the business would be down the road from there.
So let me make sure that I'm hearing you right. Are you saying that the county commissioners pick and choose where the money goes? And is that what you're saying here? You're the kind of the go-between? They're saying you have X amount of money, people come and knock on your door, hey, we want it, we want it, we want it. And the county commissioners are the ones that decide and say, okay, you get it and you don't?
We don't decide that, the Business Council does.
Okay, gotcha. So what, what role again does the county commission play then in, in all this? I missed that, I'm sorry.
It's, it's, any business that comes in that would want any sort of Wyoming Business Council grant money would come through a local government sponsor. And that would be the city of Cheyenne or the county. So if we take one of the Microsoft grants, there's a, a data center expansion grant that helps with energy costs, I believe. And so what, what Microsoft does is, they pay their energy bills, they submit part of that back to Leeds, Leeds submits it to the county, county submits it to the Wyoming Business Council, and then the Business Council...
Okay.
Yeah, gives, gives the money, distributes the money through that. So that's how the county is the go-between. So we don't have the final say in that. It's the Wyoming Business Council and then the SLIB Board, State Land Investment Board, Loan and Investment Board.
Very well. All right, good morning. It's your turn, you're on with County Commissioner Troy Thompson.
How you doing, Gary?
Well, you?
Not too bad. I've done better. The state law clearly suggests that it is illegal to give away tax dollars, money to corporations, I would think, for obvious reasons, because county commissioners and elected officials would play favorites or possibly be bribed into looking the other way. God only knows how much that sort of stuff could go on. But you're in violation of the law, Mr. Thompson. How do you respond to that?
All right, thanks for the phone call.
Again, I guess I would go back to the legislature. And the legislature approves these monies for economic development. And so it's, I guess if you're, if you question the legalities of this, I guess I would, I would say we need to talk to the Attorney General, we need to talk to the legislature. Because these are programs set up by the Wyoming Legislature that allow these monies to go to economic development.
All right, great. All right, it is your turn. You're on with County Commissioner Troy Thompson. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Thompson, Ron Williams. I was listening to you talk about Leeds and their idea of looking at the greatest quantity of jobs. Wouldn't it seem far more appropriate for them to be looking at the quality of the jobs rather than the quantity? I'll take the answer off here.
All right, thanks.
Yes, absolutely. That's, that's an excellent question. And a lot of these grants, when you go through and you read the contracts with these grants, you will, there's clauses in there that say, and again, each, each grant is different, but it will say the mean or the average salary needs to be 10% or whatever, X percent above the local average. So, so that, that is taken into consideration. Now, now again, again, these are programs through the Wyoming Legislature. And with the Magpul deal, it was because of the manufacturing jobs that they say Wyoming is lacking, you know, in our economy. So I don't know what the stipulations are in that Magpul deal, because I haven't seen the final grant agreements on that yet. Again, we're still kind of working through those. But, but every one of these that I have seen, it has said, you know, it was greenhouse data, the Microsoft deals, it has said, your, your mean salary has to be X percentage over the local average, otherwise, yeah, you don't get the funds. So that, that directly addresses the quality of the jobs.
Hey, good morning. Welcome back to KGAB Mornings. Light snow falling around the capital city right now, if you haven't been outside yet. And we are in studio with County Commissioner Troy Thompson. And we're going to head right back to our phones. Good morning, it's your turn.
Good morning. And light snow out in the county as well.
Good morning. Oh, great, thanks for the update. If I'm heading to the county, then I'll make sure that I wear my rubbers.
Hey, Mike Burns, how you doing today?
Good, sir, how are you?
Fantastic. Hey, two callers ago, guy before Ron, just wanted to let him know that in 1986, the Wyoming Constitution was amended to allow funds to be used and the amendment of being used. It is not illegal anymore. That is very, very old information.
Very good.
So we're in good shape. Mr. Thompson, great job. Thanks for being there.
Hey, thank you, I appreciate that. And again, I believe that change that we're talking about was to allow those monies to go for the purpose of economic development.
Right. So again, so you being kind of the go-between as the county commissioner, you can kind of advise and say, hey, we think this might be some good business, as you advise the, the council, for the Small Business Council to maybe take a look at a business and say, hey, sure, maybe we'll consider them?
You know, we, again, we don't, in the determination of which companies get those grants, we don't have, we don't play a big role in that. You know, we do sponsor those companies. But if a company comes to us with Leeds or through Leeds, you know, we put those forward to the Business Council, and then their decisions are made, you know, based on their rules and regulations.
Hi, you're on with Commissioner Troy Thompson. It's your turn.
I hate to call in twice in one day, but when somebody calls me a liar on live radio, I'm forced to. That's current information, that's right out of the current state constitution, buddy. And maybe you should get your facts straight. And if you care to take it offline, we can do it. I'd be happy to show you the state constitution, unless you're unable to read, then I'll read it to you. Okay, thanks.
Hey, thanks for the call. Okay, it's your turn, go ahead.
Hey, good morning. Article 3, Section 36 of the state constitution, no appropriation shall be made for charitable, industrial, educational, or beneficial purposes to any person, corporation, or community not under the absolute control of the state, nor to any denominational sectarian institution or association. So that your previous caller's right, it is unconstitutional. It's not illegal, though. Remember that. But everything Eichmann did was legal too. Take care.
All right, thanks for the phone call. Real quick, it's your turn.
Okay, I'm calling back in too. So I guess Richard Hawley with Senator Enzi's office was spot on when he told me that there is no such thing as any grants. So...
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll give you guys an idea. And thanks for the call. I think you all ought to meet down at the local coffee shop, get this hashed out, and then we'll get you on here on KGAB Mornings so we can hash it out. I'm having fun, I'm not trying to disrespect any of the callers here. So Troy, we're getting ready to come up on the bottom of the hour break here. And when we return, there's a couple of other things that we want to talk about. Looks like the county is still searching for a planning director.
Correct.
And we'll talk about that, about where the council or where the commission is on that. And we'll take some more phone calls. You're listening to KGAB Mornings. Good Monday morning. Gary Freeman in on Cheyenne's number one news talk radio, AM 650 KGAB or kgab.com. Light snow in the area, folks, so definitely leave early now. Hope you're having a great morning. Keep it right here, we'll be back. Hey, good morning, Cheyenne, 8:41 is your time. Getting you off to a great Monday morning, right after spring break. I know the kids don't want to have to go back to school, but hang tough. Summer's right around the corner, and mom and dads are like, thank God they're going back to school. 8:42 is your time. We do have, we had some light snow in the area, a little bit cold, so keep an eye on that as you're traveling around. And in studio, we have with us County Commissioner Troy Thompson. Welcome back to the program, sir. I want to ask you really quickly here, there was an article that said after four months, county's still searching for a planning director. Maybe tell us about some of the obstacles that are going on with selecting a, a planning director, sir.
Yeah, you know, Gary Krantz was our director of planning, and he left last fall to take a job in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. And he left some very big shoes to fill, because he was a very good planner, knew how to stick to the rules, but yet do everything he could to work with business. And, you know, I think with that in mind, we want to find somebody that, that is very similar to that, that knows how to, you know, to work within the confines of what our rules are, but yet is, is very business friendly. And so we are looking for that person that is a perfect fit for Laramie County and a perfect fit for what we want to accomplish with our planning department.
Now, I understand you're looking at resumes and experience, but about how long should this process take?
You know, if you would have asked me last fall, I would have said, boy, I hope we have a position filled in a month. So how long should it take? I, you know, I don't know for a position like this. But I do know that we want to make sure that we get the right, right person for the, for the job. And if that takes, you know, two weeks, great. If it takes six months, great. It's better to take more time now than to regret it and be going through the process again.
Okay, now you don't have to share, obviously, I don't want to hear names on the air. But do you have a couple that the commission, are we getting a little bit closer? Do we have one or two folks maybe that are on the list that you think might be good candidates? Or are we still through some of the rigid interview process?
You know, we've, we've interviewed some phenomenal people, we've interviewed some, some not so phenomenal people as well. And, and again, I, you know, I guess I'd like to leave it as we're still working through that process. And we do have some, some fantastic candidates, and hopefully, we can get that perfect person.
That's great, all right. For those of you just joining us, we're talking to County Commissioner Troy Thompson on KGAB Mornings here. Now, there's another issue that I wanted to talk to you about, Commissioner. As far as moving the county fair back to Frontier Park, it seems like there's an issue going on here in Laramie County. Some are saying that it costs Laramie County some $50,000 a year to run its fair at two separate sites. A lot of people in the community believe it's time to stop this kind of waste of money, and that the county commission should relocate all the fair to Frontier Park. Where are we on that on the commission? And what are Troy Thompson's thoughts on that?
That's, that's a great idea, because this, this 50 grand a year drives me nuts, that we have to, it costs us that much to move the fair from the Archer complex, you know, to the, to the, to the Frontier grounds. But there's this small thing that takes place the last full week in July, and it's, it's called Frontier Days. And with Frontier Days being out there and needing the grounds, we can't leave all of our stuff out there. It's, you know, Frontier Days has to have Frontier Days. So we're forced to have that stuff stored somewhere. So right now, it's the Archer complex. So I guess the, the only way to get that so we won't have to move is to not have it at the Frontier Days grounds. And, you know, I guess the option with that is to, you know, continue moving forward to have it out at the Archer complex.
So let me just put a scenario up here, it could be right or wrong. You guys would have to, I guess, to keep it all out there, you'd have to get bungalows or storage containers, then hire help to store all that stuff. And I guess it's just a bigger headache and may, you know, cost a big chunk of money anyways, if we did it that way, considering that the Cheyenne Frontier Days has to have a place to set up.
And that's, that's what that 50 grand is. That 50 grand is the, you know, we, Frontier Days hands us over Frontier Park, I think, the Wednesday after, and then I think the following Saturday is when we start with the county fair. So that, that is that money. And that money comes from, as far as the exact numbers on that 50,000, that comes from the Fair Board. You'd have to talk to the Fair Board about that number.
But it's on or about. I mean, we're not looking for specific pennies here, but it's on or about 50 grand.
Right, right, that's exactly right.
Okay, all right, we're talking with Commissioner Troy Thompson here on KGAB Mornings. If you have a question for Commissioner Thompson, you can certainly call us at 632-6500 or 632-3323. Hang tight through this last break, we'll be back right after this. 8:47 is your time, good morning.
McGee, Hearn, and Pies, Certified Public Accountants and Consultants, bring the following tax tip to you. You can't pay your full tax liability, or doing so creates a financial hardship. The IRS considers your unique set of facts and circumstances, your ability to pay, income, expenses, and asset equity. They generally approve an offer and compromise when the amount offered represents the most they can expect to collect within a reasonable period of time. A Certified Public Accountant can check your eligibility and assist you with an offer and compromise.
Each client situation is unique, and therefore, each client's needs are unique. We listen and gain the understanding of our clients' accounting, tax, and IT needs in order to deliver the tailored services to meet their unique situation. Call us at 634-2151.
For personalized quality service, call the Certified Public Accountants at McGee, Hearn, and Pies today at 307-634-2151. McGee, Hearn, and Pies, believing in the value of relationships.
State and local news you can depend on with a click of the mouse or a swipe of a finger. Get news on demand 24/7 at kgab.com.
And we're back with Commissioner Troy Thompson here on KGAB Mornings. Glad to have you along with us. If you have a question for the Commissioner, 632-6500 or 632-3323. Tell you what, let's go right to the phones. Good morning, it's your turn.
Hey, good morning, Gary.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Eric here. Hey, Commissioner, I'd like to ask you just a couple of questions. You were offered a 10 cent hike in the gasoline tax, which has now brought our groceries all made more difficult for people who aren't fixed incomes. And I also understand this is the year that the, it's possible that the county commissioners can put in for a raise, elected officials?
This year is the year that we look at all of the elected official salaries, correct, for the next four years.
And if you're gonna, and that's going to happen, what kind of raise percentage are you looking for?
All right, hey, thanks for the phone call. There's a couple things on there, Commissioner, if you could answer those.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. By state statute, every four years, the elected official salaries are looked at, evaluated, increase, decrease, whatever. So we haven't had, we've had preliminary discussions, if you will. We haven't had specific discussions on those. And really, there's, there's kind of two categories here. There's the elected officials, the county clerk, clerk of the district court, county assessor, sheriff, and then there's the county commissioners. And certainly with the other elected officials, you know, their salary has been what it's been, I believe, for the past four years. And so, you know, there has been discussion about, again, trying to bump that up. Again, I have no idea. You know, our employees went five years without a pay raise, and last summer, we were able to do that. It was a small percentage. You know, I guess I would hope to be able to do the same kind of thing for our, for those elected officials. And then you start talking about the county commission. And, you know, I sat in here four years ago when I was running for county commissioner, and, and the question was asked, if we go from three to five, would you support reducing the salaries? And at the time, I said, you know, we need to, we'll need to look at that. And I still think we need to look at that. You know, I will tell you, Gary, with five commissioners, I still have to read every board packet, I still have to do research on every single agenda item that we have. And I would even argue that there's a higher workload with five than, than there were with three. And I guess I'm kind of blessed to have that opportunity to spend two years with, with three commissioners, two years with five commissioners. And I do think the workload has gone up. And I do think the workload has gone up. Now, does that need to equate to a pay raise? I don't know.
Well, I think with some people, Commissioner Thompson, their ideas too, one, what Eric just articulated, and I think that's a big concern. But the other one is, the Laramie County School Board, they make no money. And they have to read packets, they have to review, they have to take time out of their busy schedule. And you guys are making like, what, $40,000 a year or whatever?
Correct.
I think, you know, if you look workload to workload, you guys are making $40,000 more dollars than the local school boards are, and there's a big workload there too. So, M. Lee Hausenauer, he did campaign on the fact that he wanted to cut that in half to help save the taxpayers' money. And I think what happens, you start getting into more of public service rather than using public service to make 40 grand a year. I'm not trying to deplete from your workload, but what I'm saying is, when you start looking at the numbers, you know, why not decrease it? So let's take a phone call here this morning. Good morning, you're on with Commissioner Thompson.
Yeah, good morning. I actually just turned my radio on about a minute ago and heard you guys talking.
Well, welcome, we're glad you're here.
I have a question. I was at a couple of these Plan Cheyenne meetings with the commission. And I just want to ask you, Troy, do you encourage the populace of this county to get involved in things that affect them?
Absolutely.
Do you encourage that and look forward to that?
Absolutely.
Really? Then how can you chastise people here the last time saying, how dare you get involved?
Yeah, I think you're changing the words. You know, what I said at that last county commissioner meeting is, you know, we had people that were, I would call it fear mongering, putting ideas into people's heads that weren't true. You know, we had Plan Cheyenne that has been...
Really? Tell me exactly what ideas that weren't true.
We had Plan Cheyenne that had been in existence for the past eight years.
Have you read this plan?
Yeah, I've read it twice. You know, I...
You've read the entire thing twice?
The entire plan.
Is that what you're telling me?
Well, can I answer?
I don't know, can you?
Four years ago, I was running for election and Plan Cheyenne kept coming up. And at that time, I thought, well, you know, I really need to look into this. And so I sat down and I went through Plan Cheyenne. And yes, sir, I did read the plan. Now, it's coming up this past few months here, we've talked about updating Plan Cheyenne. And actually, it hasn't just been the past couple of months, it was two years ago we started this process of updating Plan Cheyenne. And yes, sir, I read through the entire plan. And I was part of that group that went through and made amendments to this plan. So yes, sir, I've read the plan. Have you?
632-6500 or 632-3323. Troy Thompson's on the phone. Please keep it down to one phone call per. And also, please keep things civil. He said he has read the plan, so he's read the plan. Let's bring that up now. I have to hand it to you and we'll take this phone call here very shortly. One thing I have to hand to the county commission is the fact that they took the time to read it, digest it, amend it. I know Commissioner Amber Ash worked very, very hard on this, reviewing and the amendments, whereas the city council just kind of thumbed their nose at the public and said, well, you know, like it or lump it, this is what we're going to do. So I would say on that note, that is a plus in the basket for the county commissioners. Whether everybody agrees with your decisions or not, at least you guys took the time to look at it and amend some of it.
Yeah, I think it was wise to do it the way we do it, you know, again, to work through the entire document, say, listen, this is what we can live with. Hey, this, this we can't, this doesn't make sense for our community, this does. And, you know, I think with those amendments, yeah, I think we've got a good, solid plan moving forward. Now, I would tell you, Gary, I know a lot of those folks on the city council put in just as many hours working on the plan. I don't think there were the votes to approve amendments.
That's the point. The point is, Commissioner Thompson, is not that they didn't take the time or take a look at it, it was more or less their attitude towards the public and how come you guys saw things that they didn't? You know, and I don't expect you to answer that, that's a rhetorical question. Let's take a phone call. Hi, it's your turn.
Hey, good morning. Hey, I had called in about a week ago and I had a question for you in perfect time. With this Plan Cheyenne, what type of demographics are expected to be brought into Cheyenne? Is it going to be poverty, low income demographics, or is it going to be beneficial to business owners like me? Because I'm all for it if it's for growth and for business opportunities. I'm 100% for it. I love Cheyenne and I love Wyoming, so.
All right, hey, thanks for the phone call. You're gonna have to answer that one kind of quick, Commissioner, but go ahead.
Yeah, that's a great question. And I think if you look at the plan and you look at the fact that we have an overall long-term plan, I think it does nothing but benefit small business, whether that be existing small business, whether that be bringing businesses in.
In what ways?
By having an idea of how our community is going to grow and where our community is going to grow. And like I said throughout this entire process, nothing in this plan is set in stone. I mean, we still have to come in and say, hey, listen, the county commission is going to approve this subdivision or the county or the city council's going to have to approve this. But it does give us an idea of where things are going to grow and how things are going to develop.
Well, it sounds like you're welcome to the public's comments and questions, and I'm sure you'll be good at getting back with them. Where can we contact you, Commissioner Thompson, should they want to do that?
You know, you can contact the county's email address, which I believe is commissioners@lermycounty.com, I believe, or you can use my personal one too. It's T. Thompson, D. V. M. at AOL.com. So T.T.H.O.M.P.S.O.N., D. is in David, V. is in Victor, M. is in Mary, at AOL.com.
All right, Commissioner Troy Thompson, thanks for carving out part of your Monday morning right after spring break to be with us here on KGAB mornings.
My pleasure, Gary. Thank you for having me.
And we'll see you next time, if there is a next time, providing you get reelected.
Sounds good. That's right, yeah, it'll be that.
And now, back to KGAB mornings with Gary Freeman on AM 650 KGAB.
Hey, good morning, Cheyenne. Welcome back to Cheyenne's number one news talk radio, AM 650 KGAB or KGAB.com. Starting to warm up a little bit around the region. We did have some flurries in the air and actually, we still do a little bit, a little bit of spitting snow here in the capital city and surrounding areas. Laramie, you're mostly sunny now, which is good, 25 degrees. Cheyenne, you've got flurries at 34, it's mostly sunny in Torrington. Good morning to you folks up there in Torrington, it's 39 degrees. And Pliny Bluffs, you're fair at 36. So we're looking forward to some good weather. It's going to be warming up here before long and so that'll be a good thing. I also want to remind you about the WACMS for the multiple sclerosis is coming up quite quickly upon us, April 26, 2014. And if you want to get in contact with the events coordinator, that would be Stacy Richardson at 307-433-8664, 307-433-8664. We're gonna open it up to itch your turn and maybe digest some of the things that you've heard this morning concerning the toothpaste or pooper scooper or the county commission. We'll take your calls at 632-6500 or 632-3323. FFA members are coming to Cheyenne for a convention here in Wyoming, the high school agricultural students in navy blue corduroy jackets. Boy, I remember corduroy. We used to call them cords. My mom would say, go put your cords on. And so I had these corduroy pants back in the 70s. I guess they were pretty big. Of course, they have made a comeback. At any rate, they're going to descend on Cheyenne this week. The Wyoming State FFA Convention runs today through Thursday and is set to bring almost 1,700 members of the national organization to town, organizers have said. It's a once-in-a-lifetime experience. State FFA Secretary Lindsey Uter of Douglas said, "You meet so many people, employers or future colleges, and you get to meet people with the same interest." Attendants also get to see the events filled with people in the former Future Farmers of America's trademark blue corduroy jacket, she said. I don't know, any of you guys, any folks out there have any kids or grandkids in the FFA, Future Farmers of America? Maybe you were one. How did that impact your life? Let's go to the phones. Hi, you're on KGAB mornings.
Good morning, this is Judy. How are you today?
Well, hi Judy, how are you this morning?
I am quite well. I'm kind of changing the subject because what I want to ask is that tomorrow night at the library about at 7:00 PM, the Genealogy Society is going to be sponsoring a workshop on, you know, creating your family history, working on it. And we're all going to be there to help. And since family history is such a popular hobby, I thought I'd just let everybody know.
No, I appreciate it. That's the Genealogy Society?
Right, the Cheyenne Genealogical and Historical Society. We boycott the long name sometimes, but we'll be upstairs. I don't know if you know this, but the Laramie County Library on the third floor to the left from the elevator has the special collections room. And in that are all of the genealogy and western history and Wyoming books. And our society does fundraisers and purchases the majority of those books, but obviously the library gets them too. And we have six computers that are dedicated to genealogy research.
Well, that's great. And that's called the special collections room?
Right.
And that's on the third floor. And what time does that kick off tomorrow night, Judy?
It'll be sometime between quarter to seven and seven, but people can kind of drift in because we have a very short business feeding first.
Okay.
And we just have to get our elections done and such. But it's awfully fun and it's really low-key and just bring your stuff, I mean, your pictures, what you have, birth certificates, vital records, or if you're completely in the dark, we'll show you how to start.
Well, you know what's funny is my mother lives up in Vida, Oregon, and of course, she's retired, but one of the things that she was doing, Judy, was one of these genealogy things, and it's like a full-time job, but it is amazing. She's got it all organized and it's amazing, some of the people. And then what happens too, you might meet up with a family member that's doing the same thing like my mom did, and then they can start to help you put some of the pieces of the puzzle together that you just can't figure out.
Exactly. And it's a lot of fun, it is time consuming, and usually there's one person in your family who just loves it. And everybody else just wants to hear the stories, they don't want to do the work. So I guess I'm that person in my family, so whenever there's a document, I have my great-grandfather and great-great-grandfather's Civil War discharge papers, the original documents, pictures.
Wow.
And it's amazing what somebody has that in your family.
That's right.
And so this is just helping people put it together. And like I said, we're a pretty low-key group, we're all on our own. Membership is $15 a year, but people come to our meetings and sometimes they stay and join, or sometimes they just come to one meeting and go off on their own. But, and we have a variety of people who belong, some people like Sharon Fields, who has quite a reputation as a Wyoming historian, to someone like Leslie Vosler, who is an expert on the Mac computer and putting stuff together. And then the rest of us fall in between those.
See, and that's part of it too, is networking. We know, you know, social media, if you will, is important, but also face-to-face networking. And it sounds like you guys have some great resources for somebody maybe that's wanting to get in to the genealogical field of finding their members. You guys can tell us some of the pros and cons, some of the pitfalls, things to watch out for. It sounds like you guys have a really great group, am I right on that?
Oh, of course. You're absolutely correct. And I really enjoy it. It's one of those things, even when I'm not in a really good mood, I think, oh, genealogy tonight, and I go.
Well, that's great. Now, I have to ask you this because I have to ask this at every event, are there going to be refreshments? Is there going to be cookies?
Usually there are. I'll have to double-check on that. We try to bring something to eat, but we will be in the special collections room with all the books. So we try to be a little bit less, I don't know, messy.
Yeah, so if you're drinking Kool-Aid, we want you to drink it, not spill it.
Right, bottled water is best. Or of course, you can go down to the library cafe and buy yourself a little snack if you need it. But usually by 7 o'clock, everybody's pretty well fed.
Okay, so that's once again, that is the special collections room tomorrow night, Tuesday, around 6:45, 7 o'clock on the third floor of the library. The, can you say that again?
Cheyenne Genealogical and Historical Society.
Is going to meet and answer some of your questions and do some fun stuff tomorrow night.
And show you how to do the work. I mean, you can actually get it done, print things off and go home with accomplishments.
Do you guys have a Facebook page?
Ah, yes, we do.
Right on.
It's under the same name.
Okay.
So just go and search it and we should pop up.
That sounds great.
And we post lots of fun things on there too.
Hey, that sounds great. We appreciate you checking in on KGAB mornings and telling us that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Judy, have a great day. And if you have an event, let me share this, if you do have an event, you can simply go out to kgab.com/events-cheyenne and you can enter in your event there on KGAB and then we can get that out for you. All right, so 9:17 is your time, you're listening to KGAB mornings. We'll be back. Good morning.
A new way to start the day. KGAB mornings with Gary Freeman on AM 650 KGAB.
And if you want to be on the program today, 632-6500 or 632-3323. We're gonna go right to the phones here, but let me tell you, did you hear about this Illinois teen caught copulating in a lobby? Good grief, people. An Illinois couple who apparently didn't have access to the backseat of a car decided to get down to business in a fairly questionable area. It was the lobby of a condo building. A resident of the Niles condo building walked in on the couple having, well, you know, whoopee. On a chair in the lobby, a little after 5:30 PM, the 44-year-old woman yelled at the teenagers and told them to stop what they were doing and leave. The boy, who's believed to be in between the ages of 16 and 18 years old, then got up from the chair and pushed the woman against the wall. He said, "But we don't have any place to do that," he reportedly told the woman, according to the Niles Herald Spectator. The teens ran out of the building and Niles police officers were unable to find them. It's possible that the condo board will now have a security camera installed in the lobby. Well, welcome to 2014. Hi, you're on KGAB mornings, it's your turn.
Morning, Gary, how are you?
I am doing all right. Yourself?
Oh, good, good.
Wonderful.
Hey, this is Dale, I was a fellow caller the other day and told you he was a little disenchanted with the Tea Party.
Yeah, I remember.
But I had a chance to listen this morning, I heard you talk about the FFA and I spent about two and a half years as your statewide foundation guy. And it's a really good group of kids, in contrast to what you just mentioned on the air.
Yeah, exactly.
These kids are conservative, they understand work ethic. And the FFA is not only, excuse me, not only about farming and ranching, a lot of it revolves around public speaking, elementary procedure. They have 100 and I think it's 120 or so different, what they call proficiency awards, which gets into even like mechanics, welding, fish farming, just all sorts of things. But they do their own projects. They weld certain things, do cutouts, some of these cutouts you see of these animals, you know, along highways or county roads or whatever, a lot of those are FFA projects. So these guys do understand how the economy works or is supposed to work in this country. And so I would urge people, if, because there's a bunch of retired people out there and they just don't have anything to do or whatever, maybe instead of sitting down at the local coffee shop, you know, kind of shooting the breeze, to go down there to the civic center and wander in there and just watch this convention for two or three hours.
I'll tell you what, that is great. And Dale, I'll tell you what, when you have a great organization like the FFA and you see the kind of, I don't want to say product, but you know what I'm saying, product within these kids that are coming out, that really speaks higher of the leadership that's running these FFA programs or a boxing program or whatever it is. It really shows that there's some great leadership involved, doesn't it?
Exactly, exactly. And this is, these are a lot of our leaders, you know, for tomorrow.
And God knows, America needs leaders.
Exactly. These kids believe in God and country and community and stuff like that. And I would urge people spinning off on kind of what I said the other day, this is a group that is not quite as high-profile as well-known as other groups, but this is a group that people need to donate because, too, because the dollars go, they'll go to winners, okay? We've been pumping jillions of dollars into, you know, Lyndon Johnson's Great Society idea, all this stuff. And where's it getting us? You know, more and more people sitting around saying, hey, gimme something, gimme, gimme, gimme. Don't want to work and stuff like that. These kids want to work. When you tell these kids, be down here, be on this bus at 5:30 in the morning.
They're there.
They're there.
Well, did you hear the, did you hear the, did you hear the interview we had this morning with Jake, the pooper scooper kid?
No, I did not.
11 years old and this guy, this kid, this 11-year-old kid here in Cheyenne, last month he brought in 400 bucks. He's 11 years old, he's got his 15-year-old brother and nine-year-old brother working for him, and he pays them 20% and then his mom gets paid 10% for driving him around. around. Come summertime, this kid's gonna be cashing in some big bucks and he's only eleven years old.
Well, that's, that, that is fantastic. And contrary to the beliefs of our president, that, well, if you try to make money, you're, you're evil, you know?
Well, you know, you know, Jake didn't build it. His mom had to drive him and his brothers. If it wasn't for them, he wouldn't even have the, I mean, for goodness sake, if dogs weren't pooping, he'd be out of a job. So, you know, I mean, you know, as ridiculous as that sounds, but, well, hey, I appreciate you weighing in this morning.
Well, the thing is though, see, they're all working together.
Yeah.
They're all interacting, they're all working together.
It is.
And this is part of, part of what, what I was saying the other day, which is a huge immense subject, like a lot of older people, you know, you go down to Arby's and you go down to McDonald's, and there's fifty of them sitting there. And you listen to the conversations and they're all chatting and chatting about today's issues and stuff. Well, like I would say, some of, hey, go on down there and see these kids. These people need help on stuff. You know, when they do the convention, they do a big dinner out here and, uh, Quanis helps out with it and stuff, you know, as far as cooking hot dogs and all this kind of stuff like that. But that's the thing that, um, you know, and people need to check out these charities when they donate to them.
You bet.
Okay? Because I'll tell you, there's a whole bunch of them that sound real good. The American Center for Progress, well, that is way far left liberal think tank. Sounds like a great title, sounds like a great thing. You, you know what I mean?
You bet. Hey Dale, Dale, I gotta run.
How much you go?
I gotta run, but I appreciate you calling and weighing in on FFA. And, you know, he makes a great point. This is a great organization. If you're retired and hanging out at the coffee shop and you just think we're all doomed and that's all you dwell on, get out and make a difference in some of these young kids' lives, and it may pay off in your future, as well as theirs, as well as our city, our county, our state, and well, hopefully our country. You're listening to KGB Mornings on Cheyenne's number-one news talk, AM 650 KGB or kgb.com. Good morning.
Sorry, what?
It starts with difficulty hearing in a crowded room.
Can you repeat that?
You'll have others repeat themselves because of any background noise.
Can you turn up the TV?
Then you'll turn up music, TV, anything you struggle to hear. And eventually, the sounds of life will fade away. Unless you do something about it.
Cheyenne Hearing Clinic. Trouble hearing? Arlen Walter is listening. Call Arlen today at six-three-five-zero-four-three-five.
And nine twenty-nine is your time, and I appreciate that last phone call from Dale. He was actually weighing in on, uh, some of the great things that are going on, uh, here in Cheyenne and to get out and, and talk about to the FFA guys. And, you know, the cowboy code ethics are really something to be, uh, spoken of, and a lot of these FFA groups, they have that, uh, Code of Ethics of the West, really. And, uh, the title this year of this upcoming event that's happening with the FFA is entitled, Ride for the Brand from the Code of the West. And, uh, the Wyoming State FFA Convention runs today through Thursday and is set to bring almost seventeen hundred members of the national organization to town. And, uh, I'll tell you what, we gotta come up on a hard break here, but I do want to take some more phone calls. When we come back on the other side, you are listening to KGB Mornings with Gary Freeman on Cheyenne's number-one news talk, AM 650 KGB or kgb.com. Phone number six-three-two-sixty-five-hundred or six-three-two-thirty-three-twenty-three, and we will be back shortly, right after this, don't you dare.
Hannity, talk radio for a new generation. Weekdays at one and Sunday mornings at eight on Cheyenne's number-one news talk radio, AM 650 KGB.
And that is ACM Entertainer of the Year, George Strait. He's had a top-ten hit for the last thirty years. And by the way, that was voted by you at voteACM.com, and so he is the winner of that, as many of you already know, the, uh, Old Troubadour. He'll be a Old Troubadour when he's gone. If you want to be on the program today, six-three-two-sixty-five-hundred or six-three-two-thirty-three-twenty-three. Let's go to the phones. Good morning. It's your turn.
Good morning, Gary.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Say, I'd like to piggyback on the last caller who was talking about the, uh, FFA program.
Please do. Wonderful.
And how great it is. I would also like to, uh, give kudos to the 4H program here in Wyoming, as well as, and particularly Laramie County.
And why is that? And why is that?
Because these two programs piggyback together, and a lot of the kids that are involved in these, uh, programs are often involved in both of them, and for differing reasons.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, it's involved with agriculture because, well, that was their origins. But it, both programs have developed into programs that are developing leaders with speaking skills, with, um, all kinds of, as the man said, economic understanding, how our economic system works, um, various interests, especially with 4H, it's probably a lot broader project, um, area than what FFA has. But I would encourage, uh, perhaps even you to, uh, contact the Cooperative Extension Office here in Laramie County and maybe get one of the, uh, young ladies that works over there to come on and speak about 4H and to inform the public about what 4H is. I mean, it's not what it was when I was in 4H several years ago.
So they've kicked it up a notch.
Oh, yeah. And they've appealed more to the urban, um, youth. Um, they have a special program that they are working with, with the children on the base, military families. I mean, not just on the base, but military families across the state, um, that are teaching, you know, good values, good solid, um, what's the word I want? Leadership.
Character leadership, yeah. For those of you that are just joining us, Linda is talking about the Wyoming State FFA Convention that runs today through Thursday. And, uh, if you are in the Cheyenne area or surrounding area, they will be at the Cheyenne Civic Center tonight at seven o'clock. And actually, the name, uh, of the, uh, the actual, this year's theme, rather, is Ride for the Brand, which is taken from Code of the West. And, uh, I, I want to be out there tonight, to be honest with you. I'm gonna try to make it out there. Um, if you're at UW, uh, they're gonna have a coaches' meeting today at eleven AM, uh, the Animal Science foyer Ag Education Facility. For more detail, you can certainly head out to their website, wyomingffaa.org. And, uh, Linda was calling to piggyback and saying that the 4H is also another great organization, that the two kinda work hand-in-hand. And Linda, one of the things that I had shared with Dale, the caller in the, uh, last segment, was really, when you put out a great product like this and you see these kids coming out and they, and they're really shining, I understand the kids have to do something, and they do, but also it reflects on what kind of leadership they're getting, what they're, what they're getting from these great organizations like the FFA as well as the 4H.
Oh, yeah. That, you know, the leadership that, that comes from the sponsors, and these are sponsors within the school districts, really, for the FFA. Um, Ty Berry is instrumental with the, uh, group there at Central High, um, in Cheyenne as, and there are, um, is it, uh, Mr. Cox is out at Pine Bluff. And right now, I'm drawing a blank on who the, uh, FFA sponsor is and who isn't.
Sure.
But any of these gentlemen can tell you, you know, just collectively over the years, where some of these young people have gone and what they've done with their lives after leaving, um, the FFA program. And, you know, I think it would be interesting to have some of the FFA kids on, some of the...
Oh, yeah.
The 4H ambassadors for Laramie County. There are four of them, and you can contact them probably through the, uh, County Fair Board.
I know Texas Roadhouse is one of the sponsors with the FFA and, uh, some others, um, out at the Cheyenne Event Center. So there are a lot of sponsors. Casper College, I do believe, is one as well, the Agricultural, uh, Department, UW Animal Science, on and on. A lot of great sponsors that really help these kids, and, and really, it's a good thing for those kids knowing that there's a lot of big organizations or a lot of restaurants in the community that recognize their hard work and want them to succeed.
You know, one of the things that kind of piqued my interest on this was there's an article, an opinion in the, uh, paper yesterday, and you referred to it, and you're talking with Troy, concerning the, uh, fair. And one of the, uh, statements that was made by, uh, the writer of the editorial said that the fair is mainly to let rural young people show off their agricultural-related projects every year. Obviously, he has not been out to the fair to see what is going on out there. Obviously, he has not talked to the youth that are involved with both FFA and the fair as far as 4H and open-class projects are concerned. There are many adults who participate in our fair, and it's not just the young people. The open-class, uh, projects out there, there are some fine arts projects out there that some of the women have done that are absolutely gorgeous.
All right. Hey, great stuff, Linda. I gotta let you go. I got another caller on the line, but thanks for weighing in. Good morning. It's your turn.
Uh, this is Doran Lummis, and I just thought I'd, uh, throw in a little tidbit about, uh, FFA and 4H.
Please do.
I've got three daughters. Of course, they're big and grown and active now, but, uh, but they, all three of my girls were in both 4H and FFA. And one of my daughters is Cynthia Lummis, and now she's the, uh, lone congressman, uh, for the state of Wyoming. And, uh, if you talk to any one of the three of them, they would attest to the, uh, wonderful time they had in both 4H and FFA and how it added to their quality of life. And I just throw the, I thought I'd throw that in for what it was worth.
No, we appreciate you calling. That's great.
Okay.
That's great. Uh, hearing live-fi stories of people that have actually been involved with FFA, and if you're just joining the program, uh, we're having this discussion today because the Wyoming State FFA Convention is running today through Thursday and is set to bring almost seventeen hundred members of the national organization to town. And so, seven o'clock tonight at the Civic Center, they're gonna be down there. Let's take another call. Good morning. It's your turn.
Hi. Kudos to that kid with the pooper-scooper business.
Wasn't that awesome?
Yes, but I'm wondering how long it's gonna take the regulators to get out of this.
Exactly. Well, i- if you heard, he wanted to start a lemonade stand and is basically, his mom said no, wasn't gonna raise enough money for a laptop. And I thought, buddy, if you're doing anything like that in this town, they're gonna stink and make you get a license, and the city's gonna be on ya, and on and on and on. So probably better to just poop-scoo, or scoop-poop and make your money that way.
Yep. One other thing. This morning on Fox, uh, Jeb Bush was hinting at running for president.
Yeah, I heard that.
And what is he gonna do? He wants, he doesn't want to run for president till he gets a hopeful message. Haven't we heard that before?
Yeah.
And I think his name is Obama.
Yeah. Hope and change didn't, uh, work out so swell for a lot of people across the fruited plain, did it?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think, uh, Jeb Bush would be a good president, really. I don't.
And why is that?
His environmental, uh, situation with, don't, don't drill in my backyard and a whole bunch of other things like that. Plus, he's in favor of amnesty. He says it should never be, uh, illegal aliens should never be considered felons. They should just be, uh, my, uh, low-level misdemeanors. What a bunch of nonsense that is.
Yeah.
They're breaking our law, big time.
Right. Yeah. Well, I appreciate you...
I don't think we need Bush. Okay, thanks a lot.
No, I appreciate you weighing in, right? I mean, what good is that if you're gonna raise your right hand up, hold the Constitution, and then not follow it? Doesn't sound like a good deal to me. Nine forty-eight is your time. We're getting ready to wrap up. Of course, we'll take a few more phone calls when we come back, right after. Hey, good morning, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and all surrounding areas. We're getting ready to wrap up the morning show here, Cheyenne's number-one news talk radio with your host, Gary Freeman. Been having great discussions this morning, a lot of great guests. Before I forget, we want to thank, uh, Commissioner Troy Thompson for coming in, also Jake the Pooper-Scooper Guy, and of course, uh, Dr. Katz, talking about what kind of toothpaste are you using? Are you using the right kind? Are you destroying yourself or are you helping yourself? Nine fifty is the time. Let's go right back to the phones here. You are on KGB Mornings with Gary Freeman. Good Monday morning to ya.
Uh, good morning. I'd like to, uh, chime in on this Jeb Bush issue.
Sure.
I hope the Republicans do not nominate him. His position on Common Core has so many people around the country who won't vote for him. And I'm afraid the Republicans will run another loser.
Well, let me tell you what, so far, the track record of Washington DC, uh, kicking them out has not been very good. We saw the downfall of Bob Dole, we saw John McCain, we saw Mitt Romney, and now if they're gonna kick out and endorse Jeb Bush, it's almost like, uh, Obama going around and some of these Democrats that are running, it seems like whenever he shows up, they lose. I think the same thing's happening on the Republican side. What's your observation?
Well, I think we need to speak up and stop them from doing that. I think we need to let them know they need to give us a candidate we can support.
I think we need to, like, with George W. Bush, all right, you notice, he didn't come out of DC, yeah, granted, they can say, yeah, well, his dad had this and his dad had that, but basically, he rose up the ranks on his own. He was a governor of Texas, uh, he rose up on his own, the people liked him and they voted him in. Granted, it was by a slim margin, and we don't want to get into the whole hanging Chad business and everything else, but whenever they pumped him out of DC and DC is like, "This is our man. It's their turn." See, it was Romney's turn. It was, uh, uh, Bob Dole's turn. It was McCain's turn, and every time they try to get a turn, they lose.
Uh, well, perhaps. I, I would like to get a letter campaign going to Adelson and some of these money people to urge them not to, to fund, uh, some of these candidates that, that we can't, we can't support.
What is stopping you?
Uh, well, I've written, and I've contacted a bunch of the Common Core people, uh, hoping that they would do it, and, uh, two of them have replied, and they said they'd never heard of Adelson. They didn't know who he was. And a couple of them just haven't replied at all. But I will continue.
You keep on the firing line, hon.
And if there's anybody else that, they can, they can Google Adelson. I can't get his address. I expect it's hard to reach him, but they have a school that he and his wife run in Las Vegas, and I'm writing that school, uh, hoping that they will forward his letters to him, in case anyone else wants to join the cause.
Well, that's a great desire.
Okay, thanks.
And let us know how that goes.
Okay.
All right. Six-three-two-sixty-five-hundred, six-three-two-thirty-three-twenty-three. Hey, folks, want to remind you too, that if you're looking for something for your kids to do this summer, St. Mary's Catholic School has got a program running from June ninth to August eighth. It's the St. Mary's Fun and Enrichment Program, and it's available for three-year-olds, Potty Learned, and four-to-ten-year-olds. Program includes math challenges, local field trips, library time, fun with science, and kids cooking. For more information, you can get ahold of St. Mary's Catholic School. They're located at 2200 O'Neill Avenue, right here in Cheyenne. Good morning. You are on, uh, KGB Mornings. It's your turn.
Hey, Gary, this is, uh, Bruce from Lingle.
Hi, Bruce from Lingle. How are you this morning? Are you getting any snow out there? Is it starting to break up?
No, all it gets is wind.
Welcome to Wyoming.
Yeah.
What's on your mind?
Yeah, I've been here for sixty years.
What's on your mind?
Uh, you know, these Republicans, they're, they're really talking me off. Every time I turn around, I can't even answer my phone at night. It seems like I get keepin', getting tapped for money all the time.
Yeah, I know a guy who's probably about your age. He's sixty-seven or sixty-eight, and he flat tells him, "Take me off your list. You're not getting my money anymore."
I've done that, and all I do is put you on another list.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, uh, if they nominate Chris Christie or Jeb Bush, uh, I'm gonna switch parties, and I've been a Republican all my life. My folks were Republicans. It's, it's one of them kinda deals, you're died in a war, you know? If you're a Chevy man, you're a Chevy man.
Yeah.
If you're a Ford man, you're a Ford man. But these guys like, like John McCain, Chris Christie, Jeb Bush, if there ever was a Rhino, those are the guys that are. are. They're so wishy-washy on everything else. I respected George W. Bush because he had convictions, and he stayed with his convictions. I didn't overly respect his dad because his dad was a little wishy-washy.
Yeah, big time.
And these other guys, that's the last thing we need, is somebody who says they're conservative, but they're really down the middle of the road. We need somebody there who's, who's tried and true, and
Well, and what's sad
And you know when you vote for him, how he's going to vote.
Right. And what's sad is you're seeing that all over Wyoming in a lot of areas. There's about a handful that have, let's say, in this case, an R next to their name, and you can pretty much mark it down. They're going to vote according to the platform, or at least close to our convictions. Whereas you have a lot of guys that are just using that R to get elected. And when you start looking at their feet and which way they vote, it is in the total opposite direction. So that is a big challenge, I don't think, just here in the state of Wyoming, but also across the country and in national elections. What are your observations on that?
I agree with that wholeheartedly. The thing about it is, is they always say, "Oh, you've got to, you've got to mediate. You've got to, you've got to sway your points. You've got to be, you've got to talk to the other side, you know, to mitigate the situation so that, you know, everybody's a push and a shove here, and, you know, and you can meet in the middle." Meeting in the middle is not where we need to be. Meeting in the middle never gets in the middle. It always gets to one side or the other, and it's usually the left side. And that's the problem with the guy we got now.
Well, I'll tell you what, what the problem is, too, and let me say what I'm going to say, that the Democrats have more leadership than the Republicans, because every time the Democrats move left, the Republicans are moving right behind them. It's like, where is the lead? That's the problem. Where is the leadership? And it really shows a hint, or maybe not even a hint, maybe it's obvious, that they are so disconnected with America. They're in their little circles in DC. They don't get out of their little circles in DC. And so they believe what the media says, and they think, "Well, it's working for the Democrats, so I think we'll try it, too." And all they do is keep losing elections.
Yeah. Well, they've got, you look at their leaders. I mean, they got Harry Reid in the Senate. He doesn't compromise. Everything's his way or the highway.
Well, you got McConnell, you got Boehner, and they're, they're jokes, pretty much, in a lot of people's opinion.
Yeah. But if we could get, if we could get some leadership on the other side. Barasso, I like, you know. But if we could get some leadership on the other side that says, you know, "Hey, it's going to be my way, or it's going to be the highway." And there's nothing wrong with gridlock. If you can't get something done, then it doesn't need to be done.
I think you make some great points. Thanks for calling. Thanks for calling. I appreciate it. Take care out there in Lingle. Hi, you are on KGB Mornings with Gary Freeman. It's your turn.
Good morning. You know, getting back to the FFA, something that we can really handle and get behind. Some of those FFA teachers are some of the best men and women on planet Earth.
You're here.
They teach these kids, "Two plus two equals four," or "Out the door." You're not coming in here with philosophies that don't work. That pig needs to be bred by another pig, and a sheep needs to be bred by a sheep, and X amount will bring you X amount. And they teach them. They love them. I had a teacher in '63. His arms were crippled when he was born, both of them. He could drive a tractor and run saws, and he taught us all how to get along, behave. He taught us what love of nature was, and I love that man to this day. I'm pretty sure he's passed on. But his name was Mr. Larry Radcliffe. I will never forget him until the day I die. He was an awesome teacher.
All right. Thanks for the call.
Bye.
Thanks for everybody weighing in this morning. I'll tell you what, you kids out there in FFA, you keep breeding those pigs, I'll keep buying them and eating them. You can't get a better deal than that. Thanks for joining us on KGB Mornings here. We've got Rush Limbaugh coming up next. Hope you have a great day today. And we hope to see you back here tomorrow morning at 6 o'clock, same bat time, same bat channel. Have a wonderful day, everybody. So long for now.